Welcome everyone to the study session on November 12th, 2024. And we've got three items on the agenda and Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you. And if you can key us up for the first one.
I would be happy to, Mayor. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. You know, all of your meetings are obviously important, but some certainly carry a little bit more weight than the others. And this evening, we're talking about three topics that I'm hopeful that years from now, people will look back on, on the progress of the city and recognize that tonight was an important part of moving some of those conversations forward. The first topic you're going to hear about tonight is one that's certainly been in the works for a while, which is our redevelopment of the Independence Square and the work of our master development team to do that. Before I introduce our speaker, I just, I know from a citizen's perspective that sometimes it seems like these topics just come about. And I want to remind us all that this is one that has been in the works for many, many years. I came across the document recently, a letter that was written in June of 1960 from the Independence Chamber to the Independence Square, well, was the Square Association's predecessor. And it was talking about redevelopment of the square and said, "The major problem of the uptown district is the lack of customer traffic." Went on to say that the greater number of people living within walking distance of the shopping area, the greater degree of success the shopping area will enjoy. And then flash forward to May of 1993, the beloved American biographer David McCullough, who was speaking in Independence shortly after his biography of President Truman came out, spoke on the square, and if I could just share part of that, said, "You have as much responsibility to maintain the best of your city as other historic American cities. It isn't just for you to decide willy-nilly that it doesn't matter anymore because you have a national duty and a great opportunity, not just to serve your town, but to serve your country." So our square has certainly played an important part, not just in our community, but in the development of our great nation. And tonight, I think, is another chapter in that story of looking to bring life and vitality and celebrate that area and that uniqueness of Independence. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Bill Crandall from the project team to come forward and share their report with you.
Can everybody hear me okay? Well, I was one when the first quote was said, so I had nothing to do with that. But, uh, but I hope to have something to do with the future of your city. So again, Bill Crandall with Kopeck and Brooks, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city council members and Mr. City Manager for the opportunity to present our plan. Wanted to begin with the purpose really of what we're doing here and what we're trying to do is, is to create a redevelopment opportunity and present our master strategic plan. And we hope that ends up with redevelopment opportunities that will guide the future of the city. The agenda today is really kind of three components. One is we wanted to go just briefly over the process of how we got here and then talk a little bit more about what we believe to be the underpinnings of success. And I know some of you've, you've heard me say this before, but I think there's kind of three elements to the underpinnings of a success for a project like this, and that's a business plan, a physical plan, or we call it the development plan, and an economic plan. So those would be the three things we're going to talk about today. And then, you know, really nothing, I'm, and you've probably heard me say this before too, I'm not really interested in doing studies we want to implement. So the whole, whole goal here is to reshape the square, and that's our plan. So without really further ado, we'll just continue to go through the presentation. The first slide is talks about process. We, the city, in March of 2023 issued an RFP, we responded to that. And by September of 2023, we were selected as the city's master developer. And joining me tonight is our team, Brett Gross with Kopeck and Brooks, and then Corey and Darren with Olson and Olson Studios. And we also have Tessa Rae and McCowen Gordon, who are all part of our response team, and they've been part of the team for the last year. And at the time that we were awarded the project and went through the council process, council or the staff also constructed a steering committee. And the steering committee included members of the city council, members of city staff, members of the planning commission, and several civic partners, including the Independence Chamber Square Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and several business leaders. So we thought we had a good complement of that. And that was about a year ago. And so over the last year, we've developed the, the master plan, the master strategic plan. We've had several community engagements. We've got lots of graphics to show you tonight that is sort of the net result of all of that. The, really the foundation of the plan, it really was born out of the 2017 Downtown Citizens' Redevelopment Committee where they just decided they wanted more. So it was a community-driven plan, and the whole purpose really is to induce investment. And again, have an actionable plan. This is not something I plan to put on the shelf. We want to actually implement this and make it actionable so that you change the color and the stripes of your city downtown. As I said earlier, the, there's a business purpose, there's a physical plan, and there's an economic solution. All those are the underpinnings of success to, to cause us to implement the project. The, the thing that I think is not unique, because a lot of communities have this, but you have, you have strong interests and you have passion. And I believe, in my experience, when communities get behind an initiative like this, the investment will come. So I think your support is going to be critical to, to share that with the outside community that you're really ready to do something different than you've been, that you've been doing. So let's begin with the ma, the business plan first. So, uh, I feel like I'm going very fast, so maybe I'll just slow down a little bit. So the business plan, it was the first leg of the stool. And the business plan, like many things, begins with your awareness and your ownership of kind of where you are, and which is someplace maybe you want to be different going forward. And, and a lot of that was reflected in the 2017 Downtown Redevelopment Committee where they just felt like the square was underutilized. And it's interesting to hear that quote because it sounds like it's been that way for perhaps decades. And, and then you have the city staff who said, "Okay, well, we just got to do something about that." So they basically, and I think that between your support and leadership and the staff's execution, they said, "We're going to change it. We're going to take controls of the reins and we want to, you know, we want to do something different." And you know, and you knew at that time that you needed some additional outside help. And that's where kind of our role came in as the master developer. Our, our job really is to support the city and to facilitate development, to encourage investment and encourage economic vitil, vitality of the square district specifically. And, you know, as I've reflected on this evening and kind of where we've been, there are very few communities in the city and perhaps the country that have as much of a rich and storied history as the city of Independence does between the trails and just the, the Truman Courthouse itself. And you marry that with, uh, with a, an emerging movement and return back to kind of the urban living, urban core. And, you know, this is not as urban as some urban areas, but this is certainly your urban part of the community. And there are plenty of examples around the, around, around this city where cities like yours have, have changed their, the complexion of their downtown areas. So we're not alone in that. The importantly, and you'll see this later on, it's important to develop an overlay district to facilitate development. So part of your job will be to, to be developer-friendly and to create a platform for developers to come in and actually say, "Okay, now I see it. They've changed their attitude. They want us to come in. They're open for business." And I'm not saying that you haven't always been open for business, but I think having an overt message to the community is, uh, is important. And we did do a market study, and the market study said a couple of things. It said, like, there's no real office demand in this district. And when I say office demand, I mean like, you know, corporate woods type office demand. And your strengths are going to be multifamily and retail. So we built our plan, which are kind of obvious outcomes in the commercial real estate world, but those are probably the two. The multifamily is kind of the darling commercial real estate asset in the country right now. And I think because of the rich fabric that you have in your downtown, that's also makes an opportunity for you to have that here. So let's continue on with the, this, we titled the master development plan, but I'd probably retitle it the master physical plan. So this is really, we're going to get into kind of what the physical plan, what it really looks like. So first thing we did is we had to identify the boundary of the plan. And that boundary is Truman Road on the north, Nolan Road on the east side, Pleasant Street on the west side, and Walnut Street on the south side. So it's about a 28-block area. And as I'll show you in the next slide, or in the next couple of slides, we'll get into a little bit more deeply. But I guess I just wanted to visit with you about the, the quality of the assets that you have right now. So you have, you have this, these fabulous storefronts, you have a lot of history in those storefronts, you have the Truman Courthouse, which is a great anchor and a great sense of place. The, the community has a great, rich history with all the, the American trails that have come through your community. And you have the farmer's market. So you've got a lot of existing assets that we think will be, that will, that will help generate a lot of brand quality and a lot of interest in the site. You have, you'll have a new, what I'm calling a urban greenfield site because at some point the city hall will be torn down, police hall will be torn, the police station will be torn down. And that creates, I think that was like, like just this site's four to five acres, depending upon how you, you know, trace the boundary. So that's a big site, and that's going to be a big opportunity for you because that, that really just doesn't happen that often in urban locations. So we want to reimagine, repurpose, and revive the heart of Independence through the redevelopment of this, of the downtown district. So the next part of our report will be getting into kind of the plan. And you can kind of see, this, we call this the stoplight plan because there's red, yellow, and green. And the green area is on the east side of the site where we, you know, where we believe there's probably more fertile opportunities for new development, brand new development. As you transition to the center part of the site, there are sites that are, that are in just that, they're in transition, and they may be redevelopment, they may be... Maybe new development, and maybe renovation, maybe repurposing some existing assets. The red buildings are more mature buildings. They really don't present themselves as obvious redevelopment opportunities. Not to say that they can't, but they're just generally serving their purpose and their place right now. So we don't really see those as redevelopment, redevelopment opportunities. The next, this slide really is the, is the final master plan graphic. And, you know, as many of you know, master plans are subject to change. So these are just our ideas that were born out of the steering committee and born out of some of the community engagement that we had. And you can see that on the right-hand side of the image is more of the redevelopment opportunities. And as you go to the west, there's less redevelopment opportunities. So that is kind of consistent with the stoplight plan that we showed before. And so we'll just jump into, jump into this plan in detail, a little more detail. So are you all seeing, what are you all seeing? You're seeing my, you're seeing, I guess you're seeing the plan behind me. Okay, good. Just want to make sure you're following me. So these, what we wanted to do here was just kind of highlight some of the commercial development opportunities. And, and, you know, to the, to the east of Nolan Road in the northeast corner, we could see that as being repurposed as potential multifamily, probably more garden-style housing. Go down to the bottom left where the, you have the U-shaped building, and that's actually on a piece of property that is about 2.7 acres, that is, half of it's owned by the city, half of it's owned by the county. And we can see that as potentially a multifamily development that's, that, we'll get into that a little bit more, a little bit later. But there's a hotel opportunity just to the north side of, of the Pharaoh Theater. The bottom right-hand side, we see that as more potential, there's a lot of good housing stock there now, so we're not talking about removing that, we're talking about supplementing that with additional infill housing. That could be single-family houses and then potentially even some row houses. So that would take a little different type of developer to come in and do that. The plan didn't focus just on commercial real estate uses. It focused on other elements in, from a planning perspective that we think are important variables to make a community successful. So in this case, we wanted to leverage some, some, the, the existing fabric. We wanted to create gateways and wayfinding opportunities. So on the southeast and the northeast part of the community on Nolan Road, or the district on Nolan Road, we could see, you know, major gateways coming into this community so there's a sense of arrival. There are existing potential opportunities on the courthouse block itself with historical monuments. But basically, these are just nodes in and around the district that if somebody were walking, they could come upon them and say, "Okay, that's kind of cool. That, that's part of the fabric of what we're doing, trying to, trying to spur on more walkable community." The next slide is, I think, one of the neatest things we did. And we have to give credit to Zach on this because this, this is, this slide really highlights more the connecting tissue between the slides. So these are all the alleyways, and there's a move in different communities where they take the, where they kind of reclaim the alleyways and they repurpose them to be either arts corridors, or they can have restaurants in the alleyways, but they make them, they make them, um, the word that keeps, keeps coming to my mind is connecting tissue because it connects all these various blocks. It connects these existing facilities to new development, but it's a connected tissue. It's sort of the, it's the layer behind the layer that strengthens the whole sense of place. The next slide is intended to really recognize the, the rich, indeed, art, community history, community that's in, in the city of Independence. And so along with the redevelopment and along with these connecting tissue alleys, we wanted to make places for art. And that art can come in the form of visual art. So these could be galleries, or it could be outdoor galleries, it could be indoor galleries. There could be a theater. We show a theater in the middle of the block. On the community center, it could be performing art. So there could be places for a play or a dance or something out in the open space. So I think we weren't, we tried to embrace the importance of art in a community. And if you look at all the, look at really any successful community, arts plays a big portion of, you know, of creating a culture and expand and elevating that culture in that community. Next slide really talks about trying to promote tourism, but promoting tourism in a way that is built off of the history and built off some of these arts opportunities. And so just north of the Pharaoh Theater, we have a proposed hotel. That could be a mixed-use hotel that's right next to the farmer's market. As I said, just said, there's a, on the community center, which is the old city hall site, there's opportunities for green space which, which could promote entertainment as well. Important to, if you're going to have this kind of tourism, what's also important is to have proper parking for people. So the urban solution for parking is not to have big parking lots, is to have structured parking lots and make it a more walkable community. So that, you know, we've, we've proposed that infrastructure as well. To the, just to the, actually to the, about a half a block west of the Truman Courthouse, there's a city-owned parking lot, and we thought that might be a neat location for a family entertainment center. There's a new, an emerging family entertainment center concept where you have multiple different venues with inside one building that are family-oriented. We thought that might be good. Then there's a structured parking facility to the west of that across the street. So these are just ideas that, that hopefully will trigger your support of the plan. As we go to the next slide, I think one thing, just to kind of make this a little bit more visceral, wanted to help you understand what it is we're really talking about when we're talking, when we're, when referring to some of this commercial investment or commercial development. So these are, these five areas are just areas that we've already mentioned, but I wanted to create some different visuals so you could, you could really understand what we're talking about. So the first one, first area is the block that is about two blocks south of the courthouse on East Kansas Avenue and Sage. And that's a 2.7-acre parcel of ground that half of it's owned by the county, half of it's owned by the city. So you'll hear that a little bit, but I want to reinforce the notion that a lot of these prime opportunities are land that you already control or could control with these. So we, we see that as a kind of a dense urban multifamily development opportunity. It could be done in phases. It could be, it could be 250 to 350 units. And we, and I think there's probably a market for that. Next focus area is the old city hall site. So it's this site. And that, as I said earlier, is four to five acres. And we envision the community center being there, and you'll hear this from me a couple of times. We think the community center is a, a really vital component to the overall success of the district because it drives traffic. And it, it, it speaks to, you know, really every age cohort, whether it's moms and their young kids, teenagers playing basketball, seniors walking and exercising, and you have really, you know, seven-day-a-week type of demand and use. So plus this green lawn area that we think would be a great entertainment, you know, kind of a, you know, just a gathering lawn for the community. But this site really presents itself well for that. It also is obviously city-owned. The next site is the site that is, is that, is where that family entertainment building would be going. And that's a site where that tent is, that's a city-owned piece of property. So it's a city, half the block, it's half a block the city owns that. And what's kind of cool about this is that, you know, the old Jones store building, which is basically sitting unused right now, when we went in there, it has this really fabulous wooden arch structure inside that building. And we could see, you know, pretty easily, I could see having an activated courthouse square area and, and opening up that, that throughway and having that kind of be a food court that would then go into this family entertainment center. So what we're trying to do is connect these uses. And, and because the city owns that block, we see that as a potential opportunity as well. Next site is, as I mentioned earlier, this is in the southeast corner of the district. And this is where there's some existing residential properties there now, but we think we're, think we could expand that to have, you know, more of a residential community there, a deeper residential community there, and single-family houses, potentially, you know, brownstone row house type development as well. So that's, that's another opportunity. The last site that we've got just to look at visually is the site that is directly north of the Pharaoh Theater. So that's, that too is a site that's half-owned by the county and half-owned by the city. And we see that as a potential hospitality site. So, so that would support the tourism, and there would be potentially a structured parking facility just to the west of the Pharaoh Theater. And again, these are all ideas, but they're ideas that are built on property that you largely own that we think help, or underpin the success of the overall master physical plan. So the final component of, of our master development strategy is really the master economic plan. And the plan really is built on the city taking leadership. And I probably have these in the wrong order, some, but I'm going to start with public investment first, the one in the middle. We believe, again, it's important for the city to put some money inside the geo-bond issuance for the community center because we just believe that community center is a vital organ. It's really the fuel in the tank that's going to help you redevelop your community. And so we believe that's necessary. In addition to that, we will enter into development agreements with private developers. And your currency right now are things like tax increment financing, tax abatement, community improvement districts, historic tax credits, transportation improvement districts, as well as, you know, getting aggressive with those first developers to come in and help them, you know, financially make this thing make sense. So that leads to the private investment. And, you know, unfortunately, there hasn't been much new investment in downtown Independence. Not to say there hasn't been any, because there has been some. You've got a couple of very prominent business leaders that are putting their money into this community, but there could be more. And so I don't, I'm not in any way taking anything away from them. But, but in order to change the, you know, complexion of the community, we're going to need more. And we're going to need more by inducing them to come in and, and develop the, these sites that we're talking about. So really, the city has to lead this. And the city can lead this by getting control of land, by building the community center, by offering these incentives. There's probably a public infrastructure component to this well, as well, where we need to improve basic utilities, water, sewer, electrical. And having all that sort of teed up is going to make this a more fertile opportunity for the city. So public, public investment and public leadership, we believe will, we believe it will create private investment. And I'm not just saying that it's happened in multiple communities around the city. So this is the rubber meets the road section. And again, we want to build stuff. We want to implement this plan. We want to get some things done. And what do we need from you at the right, not tonight, obviously, but if you have questions, happy to answer those. But we need your leadership as elected officials, your continued leadership, because you really began this journey in 2017. And that comes with adopting this master plan. It comes with amending ordinances to facilitate development. We've talked with the planning department about creating an overlay district that would be a district where we could expedite planning and permitting, just because if the, if what we're, if the, what the developer's proposing is consistent with our plan, then we know we should be able to get through that a little bit quicker. We've talked about land acquisition, and we've already met with the county a couple of times to talk about acquiring their property, and they're, they're, they're open and willing to do that. We have that, and that's about all that we've done because we wanted to get this plan approved first. But, so I think getting land of, you know, you got to have, my old boss used to say, unless you own the land or you own the tenant, you don't own anything. And you have to, and right now, you don't own anything. So we need to own the land so we can put it up on the plate and serve it to people. Community center, again, I've hit that several times, but it's really, it's a driver. It's a reason to come to the, you know, historic district. It's for all age groups. So I just want to, I don't want to underemphasize that, I want to overemphasize that. I think once we, we've got a great platform right now, we've got the will of the elected officials, we need to probably think about updating the brand of this district and creating kind of a cool factor, which we can do. And then our job will be to solicit the development community. And that's all the people that are friends of mine here in Kansas City, and we'll go outside of Kansas City to, to find the right people to come and invest, as well as finding people, not, I say Kansas City, I mean the Kansas City metropolitan area, but I also mean the people in downtown, or the people in, in the city of Independence that want to return to, return to, to return to the square. So I guess my final comment is, you know, as I reflect back on other communities, like 25 years ago, I remember having this conversation in Kansas City, Kansas, where they just didn't feel like they deserved something as nice as Village West, but they really do. And I think in many respects, the same thing happened in Lenexa 20 years ago. And you, and you really do, you really do deserve something this nice, and there's no reason to not have it. It's just a matter of doing it, and we can do it. The citizens' report supported that. They basically, in all these communities in your community, you said, like, you're basically saying, "Look, I don't want to be where we are anymore. I want to be someplace different. I want something better." And we can do that. Just, again, to pick on the community center one more time, when I spoke with Todd Pelham, the deputy city manager of Lenexa, he said their community center is achieving 135% of its plan. He said, "If they didn't have that community center, they wouldn't have gotten Keywood Headquarters to stay where they are in Lenexa." And they've now built, I don't know, they're going to have 2,000 employees out there, or something crazy like that. When I talked with Chris Angle and Miriam about the city of Miriam Community Center, which we did help them develop, Chris said, "Without that, they wouldn't have gotten that development," whereas it was the old Kmart on Shawnee Mission Parkway and I-35. They wouldn't have gotten that. So in addition, in addition to just being a great asset and a, you know, driving satisfaction for your residents, it literally drives economic development. So it's just not the money you're setting aside for the community center, it's the money that you're going to be getting by having increased investment in your community. And so to close, I mean, you, you really have done the hard work. You've thought about it for five years now or more about changing, and, and now, now it's time to really implement the plan. We have a strategic plan that I believe is built on three important things, the economic development, the, the physical development, and the business plan. And you really have to have the courage to be bold. And I think now is your time. I think you, I think, I really think you, now is your time. And so we have been very pleased to serve the community for the last year. I'd like to thank my team for, or our team for all that they've done and all the guidance that they've provided. Zach, thanks to you and your staff and all the support you've given us. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone, any questions? Please proceed.
I'll ask the Whopper. You know, this city has not ever considered a general obligation bond before. So this is new and slightly terrifying territory for a community to say that they are willing to borrow money and bank on the future. And we, of course, have not made decisions on when that would go on the ballot, what would be included in that. If the community center wasn't part of the first bond, how do you think that affects your plan?
I think negatively. You know, it's, it's hard to prospectively say exactly how negatively, but we, you need a... a driver. You need an anchor, and you need something to bring people down here. You need something that, let me say, let me say it in the positive. Every time a city has changed its color, it's because they took the leadership in investing in the community. So pick, you know, city of Lenexa, they, before they started on with their civic center campus, you know, which was their city hall and the community center, they had a bond issuance that they accrued dollars in there for five years, but they had that forward-looking commitment to do that. And I, it just makes my job way harder, because now I'm trying to have, I'm trying to attract people to come into the, like, external developers to come into the community when there isn't a driving force behind it. And I think, and again, it's not just the developers that care about it, it's people, it's independent citizens returning to the district to come down here and live, work, and play, and be entertained. I mean, it's, it's both an internal benefit and an external benefit. So I think it just makes my job much harder, and your benefits much lower if you don't do it.
Certainly have been out to Lenexa, and if you look at their investment, they invested in that kind of at the center of their, and then have grown and added organically, not with public money. So they started with their public investment sort of in the middle of the donut, and from their private money came. Independence is an older town, and we have a little bit of an inferiority complex here, which can sometimes stop us from doing things. Do you, you have many, many years with Copaken Brooks, seeing money come and go. How confident are you that private money will follow public investment?
I'll answer your question, but in reality, what happened in Lenexa 25 years ago is they drew the master plan with big, bold strokes, and it was only until, and that was 20 years ago, 10 years ago, they built city hall and the community center. So much of that development wasn't, it came before, it came before the public investment, but in terms of the buildings, but what it did, what the city did do is they had the leadership to say, "Look, we want a, we want a brand-new district zone center in our community." So they took the leadership, bought the land, got, put the roadways in, put the infrastructure in, and that caused development to come in. So I think, I think it will absolutely come. I mean, I, it won't come without it, okay? So, but if you, if you signal to the market that you are investing in your own community, the market will respond.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else, other further questions? Please proceed.
Bill, I just wanna first say thank you to you and to your team for this, this plan and the work you've done. I mean, I've been excited about this since day one, and I continue to be excited and more excited the more I hear. I just think the opportunity for a, you know, a makeover to the square essentially is huge for us and is, you know, a long, long path needed. So my question really is this, and it may be for you, it may be for the city manager, is what timeframe do you need what by for, to move things forward in, you know, in expeditious fashion?
That's a big, I mean, it's a pretty broad question, but I mean, nothing happens unless you start. So I would try to adopt this plan as quickly as you can, so that signals to the market that you're going to, that you're trying to change, you know, the complexion of, at least the district that we're talking about. You know, the sooner we can have a methodology for, a financial methodology for investing in the community center, the better off we'd be. So if that's the geo-bond in April, if you decide to do that, and if it happens, that would be terrific. Development takes a long time. It's been, it's been about 18 months since you started this process with the RFP and now presenting this evening, and it will take, if you just said, I know nobody's saying this, but if you said, "We're gonna re, we're gonna go ahead and invest in the community center by looking at the programming," and I know you're gonna do that with the police department too, "but let's look at the programming, let's begin to kind of get a design team, and let's see if we can't get sort of teed up in the event that there is a bond issuance," or there is some other financial way to do that. I think that design, I think that the programming and design process for the, for the community center, if you were just kind of anchored on that one thing, is probably about a year-long process. So maybe by this time next year, if you started January, you would have something you could go take out to try to build. The build of that is probably 18 to 22 months. If you, if we have a plan that I can go out and market for you to the, to the development community, and we've already begun to talk to a few people, development agreements, and I've negotiated lots of them, take about a year at a minimum, and then it's gonna be probably at least 20 to 24 months to build a building, depending upon the size of the building. So I think in both those cases, I think your investment today, you probably walk into a store or walk into a building in three years. And so what do we need? I mean, I think having unanimous leadership from a community is a very big signal. So I think, you know, whether it's unanimous or not, I don't know, but having strong leadership and strong support for a plan from the elected officials is a huge signal, because developers like me, time kills deals, and if we can figure out a way to expeditiously get into the development business on your behalf with another developer, it will be required, your leadership will be required to do that, getting these plans in place, getting those in place as soon as we possibly can. So, you know, in the next six months, if we can talk about bonds, we can talk about having the master plan adopted, we can talk about this overlay district, all those things are, I think, are variables in the equation that are gonna lead us to success.
Mr. Mayor, Meg jumped in to just add one thing.
Please, absolutely.
In 2017, when the Citizens Downtown Redevelopment Coordinating Committee was working on their plan, and part of that involved going to visit some other successful downtown models that Independence might wanna replicate, one of those being Lenexa. And I'm reminded tonight, as Bill is speaking, that one of the members of that committee asked the then-mayor in Lenexa, Mike Bame, "What, if anything, you know, would you say is the tie that binds here, the secret sauce?" And Mayor Bame, I was struck, have said, "But what you're seeing tonight is really kind of the end result of 20 years of planning. The council members have changed, elected officials have changed, city staff has changed, but the plan has not. There has been a commitment to that plan for the last 20 years." And, you know, so to answer your question, Councilmember Fears, I would add in addition to what Bill has said, you know, we have a sense of urgency that we need to get started, but I think we all have to have a commitment that, you know, even though this isn't chiselled in stone, this is what we're rowing towards, this is what we're trying to get implemented for our community, and have that stick-to-it-iveness that, you know, though we all may circulate in and out, those who follow behind us have a blueprint that they didn't have before that we can work that plan.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why when Zach and I talked maybe 24 months ago, again, it sounds trite, but I just think there are three things. It's an economic strategy, a physical plan, and a business purpose. You need those three things. When you have those three things and you have the support of the elected officials, you can get some stuff done. And, you know, Wyandotte County and Lenexa built those communities out of whole cloth. It was just, it was greenfield out there. But you look at communities like Lee Summon and Shawnee and other, you know, Miriam to some extent, you've got this really substantive fabric, and you have it way more than they have it. And you have population, you have density. I mean, you got a lot going on. It's just a matter of having the courage, and not that I don't think you have courage, but just, you talked about the risk of taking with these bonds. It is, it is, but that's, and you're gonna get some great results when you take that risk. I have no doubt.
And there's a risk in not activating the bonds as well.
Absolutely. Well, it's another 10 years of the same stuff you've been going through.
Anyone else, other questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Crandall, and your team. It's been fun working with you guys and the stakeholders.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
Kind of dreaming and thinking what could be up here, and this is, this is the natural next step, coming from the Downtown Redevelopment Committee. In fact, this whole study session is a lot of longtime studies and community involvement discussion just accumulating and going forward here. So next steps, resolution to put on for approval of the plan, and then do we need to kick-start any conversations for the overlay, for community stakeholders on what that looks like and what could be helpful to help move more seamlessly with development?
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things, Councilmember. There's, I think it's always important that the council formally adopts something by resolution. Again, for those who follow in behind us, those who succeed us, there's a historical record to go back and say, "How did we get to the point that we're at? And, you know, is this really the defining policy of the city?" I think Bill could certainly socialize this in his network as is, but when there's an adopted resolution that he can put behind that and say, "The council's behind this plan," that also speaks volumes. So I would recommend that as an immediate next step. We have engaged Copaken to stay on with us to specifically work on that overlay, to help activate that, and I think the engagement piece you speak to is critical. We want to make sure that the residents, the business owners, the investors in the square are a part of that decision-making process, and, you know, they're the ones that have to operate in that environment, so we wanna make sure it works and succeeds for them. But I will also then, you know, catapult further and say, you know, I liked Bill's comment a minute ago, that we have to have the courage and the will to do this. No one's going to do it for us. You're gonna hear the bond committee's presentation in a minute, and, you know, I think we have to have the courage to do big things with that. I think we have to have the courage to do big things with how the city approaches economic development and the active role that we need to play in that to help kick-start things. I do believe that that private development is coming behind this, but we need to signal our commitment to it first with more than just a resolution, but with dollars and cents as well. So a lot of big conversations to have, but I would tell you, the nice thing is, we just have to have the courage to say yes to these things that are, these opportunities that are coming in front of us.
I think we have the courage to say yes, and looking at some of the business planning and the economic portion of that, we have some of those already in place.
Yes, sir.
We have the TIF, the CID, the TDD, I do not believe that we have in place, but a lot of that.
Well, those are instruments that are available to you through state statutes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but we've, we're in a good spot to start taking off this landing strip is kind of where I'm going.
You know, the only other, this, I might be overstepping my bounds here, but schedule drives a lot of things, and the, and we don't really know what's gonna happen with the, if we're gonna even issue a bond, we don't know what's gonna happen with the bond. I would submit that I think, however it's funded, the community center is important. And I would encourage you to not wait for six or nine months to beginning the programming on the, on the community center. The community center can have 10 different things in it, but there's gonna probably be six of them that are for sure, whether it's a basketball or track or whatever. And so I would maybe suggest as another kind of a finite thing that you might wanna consider is beginning the programming, which is not the design, but it's just the programming, the sizing, what's actually in the community center, with the assumption that it's downtown. And that, you know, that's gonna take a couple of months, and that, and you won't lose that couple of months. And if you feel like the bond issuance is gonna go forward and it's going well, then perhaps you release some design work, so you're, you're operating in parallel. And yeah, there's some risk with that, but there's also some gain with that, because you signal to the community that, you know, we have, you know, confidence, we're gonna get this thing passed, and we're gonna, and then if it doesn't happen or it doesn't pass, then you figure out how you're gonna fund it. This is just another math exercise.
Sure. Well, I appreciate your boldness, and you're not stepping on any toes at all. We appreciate the work and everything you have here. We, as the council, we've got the discussion that'll be coming up and how we're gonna place this geo-bond, and in what way and what method, because this is the first time for our city. So our city's stepping out in a whole lot of faith in our leadership. This is the first time that a general obligation bond has made it this far past the coffee room napkin, so we have taken a pretty bold step, and we have to be sensitive with our citizens.
Sure. Yeah, no, absolutely.
But thank you for all your work.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else, other, anyone else? No, I just wanna say thank you on behalf of the council. Great work and incredibly expensive, extensive plan, and there's just a lot for us to absorb and take in, but I just cannot say thank you enough for all that you've done.
Mayor, it's been our pleasure, and we hope to continue to work with you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
It's my pleasure. Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, it's the big one on the table now, is that right?
That is, and I think.
The geo-bond.
Yes, sir. And if I could, again, I think it's just important for our community to know how we got here. A conversation of this magnitude, I believe, deserves just a little bit of a reminder that it didn't fall into our lap. Back in 2016, we did our annual citizen satisfaction survey, the citywide survey, and one of the things that really stood out in that survey was a significant level of dissatisfaction from the community with the maintenance of city assets. So city staff, we decided, "Let's get a better sense on what that means. What kind of issue are we looking at?" And we commissioned a deferred maintenance report to help us understand what is the condition of city assets in the community, and what's the price tag to bring those up to a respectable level. In $2,016, that was right around $900 million. And lately, you've probably heard us reference a billion-dollar investment. That's because with inflation and other needs that have since been added to that list, we believe that dollar amount is very much accurate, maybe even understated. So with that, the city began to try to find ways to chisel away at that, and through community support, we renewed our half-cent sales tax for street maintenance, we found utility projects to be funded to start to address those utility issues. But one of the things that continued to come up constantly was the need for new revenues, particularly a general obligation bond to, to help invest in our city's infrastructure. In August of this year, the council appointed a group of citizens to study this issue on your behalf. In the last several months that committee has met, they have reached a final recommendation or a series of recommendations, I should say. And so tonight, it is our pleasure, and I would say our great excitement, to have the chair of that committee, Doug Cowan, come forward and share that committee's findings and recommendations with you. And with that, I will ask Doug and our committee vice chair, G.K. Callahan, to come forward and make their presentation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Pleasure to be here with you. Doug Cowan, I have had the good fortune to live in this community for, I just celebrated 40 years of living here, so very honored to be here and representing our committee. I know Zach introduced, but this is G.K. Callahan, who served as our committee's vice chair. I know there was a report that had been emailed out to you, or a copy of the report, so I won't read it word by word, but I wanted to make just a couple of opening comments, not necessarily to all of you, but certainly to folks who are watching this meeting online or attending here in person, that this is a, an advisory or recommending body that was appointed by the council. We, as we reminded ourselves many times, we had no binding authority and still have no, no binding authority, but simply were appointed, and we are honored and humbled to be, have been appointed by the council to further study this issue. I would be remiss not to first thank the committee members, who really brought the best version of themselves to all of our meetings. I made the comment at the last meeting that it might be easy for somebody to come in and think, "I'm in, I'm in here for a fight. I'm ready to fight for what projects I think are best." And above all, people listened, and they were thoughtful and they were respectful to their neighbors in our community, and so I wanna thank them for their diligence. These are really complicated issues. Some of them are quite expensive. They are thinking about the future. They are very complex issues that cannot and should not be boiled down to a soundbite, and our committee was very thoughtful in their work. And I know I also mentioned this in And I know I also mentioned this in closing remarks, but I simply can't say a nice, not, I can't say enough nice things about city staff. The city manager, the assistant city managers, the police chief, the deputy police chief, and others who were there. Our committee met in the evening several times for multiple hours, and staff was gracious enough to educate us and keep us moving along. The amount of questions that we had were voluminous, and so, they kept us moving along. So, thank you for allowing me to just make those opening comments in regards to our work. I think it's also worthy to note that this is kind of a short burst of energy. We met a handful of times over two and a half to three months. There is no way in kind of the limited time constraints that we had that we would, could fully study any of these particular issues. So, apologies in advance, but some of our recommendations are quite broad in nature, but we have done our best to discern what are good opportunities. I would remind you that really, the opening task that we were given as a committee were to look at three very broad questions, is what might be a total bond package that the city might consider? What might be the categories that would be funded through that bond package? And what might be the amounts in those particular categories that would be funded? So, I will just kind of move through here real quickly, and I know that G.K. and I would be happy to entertain any questions. We are going to, you'll hear several times in our recommendations, the chance for additional public dialogue and engagement, especially around some of the program and more fine details of buildings and projects and things. Would certainly recommend on behalf of the committee that the council continue its good work in engaging diverse groups of independent citizens. We are a very diverse committee, or they're a very diverse community. Different needs, different wants, different desires, different ways that we perceive things, different ways that we engage in our community. And as so, as the council and staff and continue to engage with the community, we would encourage you to think about the diversity in our community as you continue to move forward to that. So, here's a quick recap of some of the things that we did in an effort to learn more about the needs of our community. When Zach introduced the topic of saying there's a billion dollars of deferred maintenance, that is a large number that most of us, at least me, I don't work with those numbers that large on a daily basis. But to some of the things that we did, we, as a group, took tours of the existing Independence Police Department building. We took tours of the existing Sermon Center building. We toured the shuttered Kentucky Road Bridge adjacent to the Rock Creek wastewater treatment area, and I want to call that out in particular. If you haven't been there, I would encourage you to drive by there. Having lived here for 40 years, I live in Council District One, I didn't know that that place existed, and I was horrified that there are certain places that are in such a condition in our community. I told several people, I was a big fan of the show The Walking Dead, and literally the bridge looks like it could be the backdrop of a scene in The Walking Dead. And I'm not suggesting that this is due to any of your or staff's negligence, but as a community, it is embarrassing that there are places like that that we've had to shut down. And obviously, in that particular project, there are complicated issues around city boundaries and that part of that bridge exists in the city limits of Kansas City. So, acknowledging that. But that was an eye-opening experience, and I think I speak broadly for the committee that to see that and to have that firsthand knowledge, a community of 78 square miles, there's a lot of things that we don't know about our community, so it was good to be there. We took a lengthy tour of the Independence Athletic Complex and learned about opportunities there might be to further enhance recreation and sport activities in our community. We received a lot of information from staff, from bond council and others about how bonds are issued. We tried to go through, I called it geo-bond 101, and understanding the implications, the ramifications, the state law and statute that guide the work and influence how we think about these issues. And of course, probably what that boiled down to is, what does this mean for citizens? What ultimately does, what is the impact on a day-to-day, week-to-week, year-to-year basis for the citizens? One thing that is important, I think, to note as we talk through some of these projects is, we reminded ourselves, largely due to our short timeframe, that a couple of the projects that we will talk about, we were not tasked nor called to be the Justice Center Review Committee. We were not tasked or called to be the roads, streets, bridges review committee. We were not called to be the rec center review committee holistically, because as I said earlier, those are very detailed and very finite, programmatic and financial implications of those decisions. We simply didn't have the time to go that deep into the discussion, but we are aware of the complexity of those. We did review, and I know it's a reference to many of you on different occasions, the exhaustive number of plans and surveys that are out there in an attempt to try to discern data, discern the will of our fellow citizens to help guide our decision-making. So, those are some overview comments and about the study that we did over our several meetings. I would like to remind you, although I will spend very little time on this because you have bond council and you have general counsel and you have competent city staff to talk you through this, but state statute, of course, guides the work that will be in front of you. You are, do not have willy-nilly authority to go out and issue whatever you want. Cities may take out up to 20% of their assessed valuation in total bond capacity. So, Independence, in my back-of-the-napkin math, has roughly about $1.6 billion of assessed valuation in our community, meaning that the total debt limit for our community could issue up to about $440 million of general obligation bonds. What is important, that became something that we really had to study and take into consideration and would call this out as a significant thing for you to focus on, is that, that is, the 20% is $440 million. But that has to be split between two categories and cannot exceed in those categories. So, public buildings, which would include, and we'll talk about, Justice Center, Rec Center, animal shelter, parks, those cannot exceed 10%, so $220 million. All other things, as it was described to us, things that move people, bridges, roads, sidewalks, curb, can be up to another $220 million, again, 10%. So, without jumping too much into our review of the proposed projects, early on, as city staff was still obtaining from vendors, some of the final cost calculations, we kind of had, at the very beginning of the meeting of our time together, we kind of had a nice, neat little bond package that we could have maybe said, here you go, here's an opportunity, and we really ran into a math problem if we were looking at trying to fully fund everything that was being presented to us. So, I'll talk through that later, but that, I'm reemphasizing why the understanding of that number is important. Okay, so, with that being said, I'm going to jump into the committee's recommendations. And I want to talk a little bit about the process for that. The recommendations, as part of this total report that you are going to hear, while there were 21 people appointed to the committee, I believe that 15, the city clerk may correct me, but, and I forgot to thank the city clerk for all of your time being at our meetings as well. I believe 15 of the 21 people were present at our final meeting. The, we did ultimately vote to approve the recommendations that you are hearing tonight. The vote, the vote was 14 to 0 to approve that. One person did abstain from voting on the final recommendations. But I say that because we were not interested in trying to figure out, could one set of projects get 12 votes and the other get nine, and then we come to you? It became clear early on that that would not provide you any direction, and it doesn't provide a sampling of what the citizens in our community want. We strove for consensus. We strove to figure out, what could we agree on? What is, how could we continue to talk to find things where we had consensus? So, consensus was our guiding North Star as we went through this. But it did require a lot of legwork with our committee, and I really appreciate their commitment to finding consensus. But it's evident in a city of roughly 125,000 people, none of us are, we're ever going to fully agree on what the best approach of the community is, but we have to find some consensus of what we are willing to support and what we can reach across our community and support. So, we took that with us as hopefully to provide you some kind of a bellwether of where our community is at. The first recommendation, and I want to highlight, and in the report, this section is bolded, the first recommendation is regarding the Justice Center. It is worthy to note that this was the committee's priority, and this was the project that received the most consensus. Ultimately, our recommendation on this is that the council considering, consider asking the voters up to, authorize up to $125 million in bonds for a new Justice Center. This is probably, our consensus around this topic or this proposed project is not a shocking surprise, because this is the project that really has had the most display, if you will, in the city. There are plans that go back before the pandemic, I think as early as 2018, that outline some initial plans. And of course, what we're referring to is the proposed Justice Center at the corner of 23rd Street and Artemiz Road, where the existing Independence Utilities Building is. It is, of course, the site of the former MCI Hospital, and there is a lot of city-controlled land that is available there for development. We received detailed reports from city staff about this project. There had been, it was two or three meetings in that we finally received what the total, if the total vision presented by city staff were to be put forth to the voters, that's worth $125 million. I know you've received additional detailed reports on this. But clearly, the benefits of consolidating, and so, this new campus would bring in several, not just the police center that we know on Nolan Road, but this also consolidates several other buildings spread throughout our community. In our tours of the police department, which has really become well-known in our community, the conditions in the existing police building are not adequate. They are not adequate for the incredible work that the members of our police department do on a day-to-day basis. It is very clear that the building in its current form was not constructed for the size of the police department that is currently employed by the city. It is clear through our tours that, among many things, there's woefully inadequate parking for officers and civilian staff. If it wasn't for the kindness of a local church to offer spillover parking, there would be cars spread everywhere. So, again, I know that most of you are aware, so I won't belabor the point. But the benefits of consolidation and the opportunity to think in the future about where this campus is, the growth of the city on the eastern side aligns where this new campus would be located. And it allows the city to think forward for another 50 or so years into the future. I won't belabor the point. Again, I want to remind you that this was identified as the priority project from the committee, the one that we had the most consensus on. It is important to note that as part of this recommendation regarding the Justice Center, that the committee had significant heartburn about what would be left here on the square following the, what seems to be inevitable raising of City Hall and the Independence Police Department. Providing, you know, creating some type of economic harm, cultural harm, social harm to the Independence Square was something that was discussed significantly by the committee. And we kind of love this phrase of, we don't want to leave a hole. We don't want to leave this gaping hole on the Independence Square as a result of the moving of these two city buildings. So, that is very worthy for me to call out as part of our recommendation regarding the Justice Center. The second recommendation of the three that we have tonight, I'm going to lump together several projects in one. These are related to city streets, sidewalks, curbs, bridges, culverts, park facilities, and the animal shelter. We are recommending and that the council consider a range of funding in the neighborhood of $71 million to $133 million for significant upgrades related to these categories. Our 1,200 lane miles of roads must be repaired or replaced as it was presented to us. There's a lot of opportunities to partner with other jurisdictions like school districts, including, of course, we have multiple school districts inside our city limits to look at creating safe pathways for students to get to school. I mentioned earlier about one particular bridge, but we have four bridges that are currently closed in our community, and so, having four closed bridges is unacceptable. And the thing that really, I think, stood out to much of our committee was the life safety issues, that that, that those closings have. I can't remember it off the top of my head, but it was shared to us from emergency personnel that there are, we are talking about a response time for emergency vehicles when they have to detour around. We are talking about families that are trying to get to school and having to take unnatural ways because certain bridges are closed. So, clearly, it is, it is a no-brainer that these things must be remedied in our community. It is clear that our community treasured its animal shelter and is seeking a long-term solution to this challenging situation with the ownership issues that exist, which I don't need to remind you of. And of course, our city loves its parks and believe that they are critical to the health and well-being of our community. The geo-bond committee, as I mentioned earlier, took an extensive tour of the Independence Athletic Complex facility off of 291 in Salisbury and northeast Independence, and sees really a vision for that property, and I'm sure to an extent others. What is the chance to use our parks and recreation facilities as a chance to bring people into our community? Many of us around the room, myself included, have children who play in youth sports, and that is a, there's a big, there's big money there in today's world. And what are the chances? The committee didn't have to think too long and too hard about seeing the Independence Athletic Complex as a real hub, a vibrant hub that's bringing people to our community and creating economic development. And then, of course, as is reflected on many of our surveys and studies of citizens, citizens always rank our historical sites and the need to keep them as a very high priority in our community. So, I offered to you that there was a range, and I'm going to talk through the math here in just a second, but that range of $71 million to $133 million is dependent on how the council perceives the issue and makes a decision regarding a recreation and community center. A couple of things about this section, and I'll move on to the last recommendation, is that regarding the animal shelter and before sending that particular line item to voters, we think it's imperative that the city work as hard as it can to come to some kind of an agreement with Jackson County about the future of that, so as to remove that ambiguity from voters' minds as they think about what could be the possibility there. And of course, we endorse the city and Jackson County working together for a resolution that is best for everybody. Regarding the proposed Recreation and Community Center, which is our third of the kind of three buckets of projects, it's important to note, before I go into any detail, that really, we are pushing that issue back to the council for decision. There was not really a lot of consensus on this. I am going to talk about the things that we agreed on and observed in relation to this. I think it is important to note that the concept of the Recreation and Community Center was presented to us about halfway through our work and our time together, and it was kind of, and this is not at, to slight the council or the staff, it just had not been all that far along in development. And so, we were kind of catching this midway through, and we didn't have the chance really to do a super deep dive. I know that staff was doing the best that they could to come work with the vendors and come up with reasonable cost estimates, programmatic opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. So, we are pushing this issue back to the council for further discussion and deliberation. But here are the things that we agreed on regarding a Recreation and Community Center. Nearly all members of the committee agreed that a recreation center can be a vital tool in the community for health and well-being of residents. And nearly all committee members believe that Independence should have a, some type of a recreation facility that offers some type of vibrant programming. Many members observed that having amenities like a recreation center are critical for a community, its perception. a community, its perception, when people move to areas or decide to stay in areas, that they have amenities like recreation, community centers, because they are things that people want. They are amenities that families look for. Many of our committee members took tours of other recreation and community centers throughout the metropolitan area, and generally, all of them came back and spoke very glowingly about the positive impact that those recreation and community centers have. Our recommendation to you is, is this project, as it sits right now, needs to ask itself, what is my purpose? There are different things that we heard through the process. There were words that we heard around, you know, is this, is this an economic engine for our community? Is it an economic engine for the square? Questions about, you know, does the size and the scope, does it lend itself to being an economic engine and an economic driver? There are things, we had correspondence, there was an email address about the Geo Bond where citizens could submit questions or comments, and there was folks in the theater community here that asked about, what is, what about theater? What about other things? You know, and what's the role here in things that were, had been happening in the sermon center? Would they be necessarily happening in a future community center? So if structured appropriately, many committee members see this type of a center as an economic development opportunity, and in this particular case, many people saw this as a critical piece for the development or redevelopment of the Independence Square. However, it's worthy to note that there were many opinions around the table that suggested there might be other places where it would have the most benefit for our community. Ultimately, we did not reach full consensus on that, this project, as it was given to us. And again, I would add that we took our job as to make recommendations on the projects as they were presented to us. We could have come up with a million scenarios about this particular center, but we stayed focused on proposed rec center on the Independence Square as what we were ultimately trying to see consensus on. it is worthy to note that the discussion came up about the rec center, community center, and the possibility of a public-private partnership. And of course, there was no additional information really to share, but just that high-level thinking, you know, because there are other communities that have engaged, operating partners or private developers that have helped to bring these out of the ground. And so people thought, had a lot of questions about the viability of that. With all of the projects, we have complex funding mechanisms in Independence, and I certainly don't need to tell you that, and they exist in every city. If Geo Bond, if general obligation bonds are voted on or approved by the voters, you will have general obligation bond funding. We have general fund, we have dedicated taxes for roads, we have dedicated taxes for parks, and many other things in this community. It is a recommendation of this committee that the council and staff, as information is shared, be very transparent and forthright in understanding what is the role that different funds play in different portions of these processes. An example is the roads, of course, where we know there is a street sales tax, and there's money that is generated every year in the storytelling. What is the role of general obligation bond money in tackling streets? How will that work in concert with these funds? So, and you can apply that to many of the categories that are on here. I want to reiterate, this is the final point on this third recommendation, that, again, it is the recommendation that the council be extremely thoughtful about this piece of land that we are sitting on as it looks forward, and not to cause economic harm or any other type of harm to the Independence Square. Those are the three major sections, and I will move very quickly through that. It is an additional recommendation that council and staff regarding these projects, that it would take on, that it would, should aggressively pursue grant and partnership money to defray costs. I mentioned the part about talking about our multiple funding opportunities. So I want to just talk real quickly through the proposed budget. As it was first presented to us, it was kind of, like I said, it was a neat and tidy little package of about $250 million, with the original from previous studies that put the Justice Center at roughly $42 million. But as the price tag to be, to build out the entire campus, as was presented to us, was at $125 million. So the option number one would fully fund the Justice Center, and it would reduce slightly if the council decides to move forward with some type of a recreation or community center. It would reduce all of those other proposed funding areas. You can see that in your packet. The Recreation Center, again, this was just based on the vendor, but would be dropped to about $68 million by removing a proposed swimming pool. And I'm going to bring this full circle back to you, is, part of that issue is, is this $220 million cap for public buildings, there's simply not enough. So within this option one, you would have to start making some challenging decisions on how you want to fund these things. So option two would be a $261 million package that would not include money for the Recreation Center. It would fully fund, fully fund the other options, and it would include, at the bottom you see, for square site work for $3 million. It would ensure that, that something is done within the acreage that is here to prepare it for development or do the best to mitigate harm on the square. So for some final conclusions, we talked about the high end of Independence' bonding capacity is roughly $440 million. The city manager, based on many factors, including looking at the city's ability to repay, the citizen obligations, looking at maintaining our strong credit rating as a community, recommended, and we agree, that the total bond package should not exceed more than $300 million at this time. But it's worthy to note, and it was brought up in many measures in many ways, that in any community, and Independence is not unique in this, but we have a percentage of our community, and I know this well in my work at Community Services League, of people that struggle in our community and their ability to absorb the taxes. And it's that very balancing, the hard work that you have ahead of thinking about, how do we balance the needs and of the future of our community versus the citizens' ability to, to be able to participate in that. It's also worthy to note, and I know you know this, that thinking about the tax burden to citizens, that Jackson Countyans did approve an additional levy last Tuesday at the poll to enhance senior services in our community. It is highly recommended by the Bond Committee that the council, if voters approve, would look at a phased approach. There is a possibility, in many scenarios, where bonding is phased out over, you know, multiple decades, and that way, the entire lump sum that has moved forward is not hit all in the first year and felt for the whole 20 years of the obligation, that it could be spread out over multiple years. Projects could be phased, some could be paid off before venturing into new projects. There's many ways to be creative, but to be thoughtful and respectful, and ultimately looking at, at our citizens and their ability to be part of this. As a lasting comment, there were several kind of buzzwords that we looked at, but these difficult decisions and thinking about the future of our community, and I have two children at home, one is 13, one is 10, and I think about, you know, the type of community that I hope they continue to grow up in, and I think will attract them back to our community, and many of us with children at home had those similar reflections. What is, what is the independence that we want to look forward to? And so I know that the work ahead of you is difficult, but again, I'm very complimentary of our committee's work and discernment. We recognize fully that these difficult decisions are now placed in front of you, but we do hope that these broad recommendations have provided some insight into how the community will react to these potential projects, the thoughts that are out there. And we did, we did unanimously approve to permanently adjourn the committee and move forward these final comments. So I would ask if GK had any additional comments, and we would be happy to take your questions.
I don't have any additional comments, but thank you, Doug. I think you did a very nice job. I really appreciate working with you.
No, thank you very much. Great job. Well, well done. Also, I attended many of the meetings. I did a great job facilitating it. Everybody was incredibly respectful and kind, even though there was a variety of strong opinions on a variety of issues, and it was great debate and a great discussion. But I just want to say thank you to you, both of you for leading it. It was well done, you know, perfectly done from a, from a process standpoint, so just great job there. And just thank the committee for all the work that they did, because they just did a great, great job, and they were there sometimes late at night, you know, okay, how do we look at this? How do we look at that? They asked great questions, and so I just wanted to say thank you on that behalf. So with that being said, I want to turn it over to anyone here that has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those comments, and I should note, we have several members of the committee that are represented here tonight, so they didn't find their work quite done. They came all the way to tonight, and so we appreciate them being here to support these final recommendations being presented.
Please proceed.
I was just going to second, you know, we ask a lot of people when we ask them to leave their families and sometimes their job early to come and spend time on things that, when they begin, are a little amorphous, and that you end up coming up with consensus and really just a substantial and thoughtful document. So please issue our appreciation to all of the people who gave their time. So thank you.
Will do. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please proceed.
I just want to add that same appreciation to you and all the group. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of the two options and that consideration in that way. It helped me kind of think through some of the pieces of the puzzle. I just want to make sure I understand one piece of it, and that is, when you talked about the Community Center, Recreation Center, whatever you want to call it, if I understood you to say correctly, there was consensus on the idea that there not be a pool included in that. Was that correct, or was that not correct?
No, and that goes back to my earlier comment, that we really tried to not be involved in, too deep into the programming pieces of it. The only reason we included, you will see a little parentheses by the $68 million for the rec center, was just to show, in that particular example, that there would, the spirit of having to make some cuts, I hate to say cuts, but just decisions on what are the priorities. As the dollar amounts were presented to us, the rec center generally was costed out at the vision presented to us somewhere between $85 and $95 million. At the full recommendation of the Justice Center, parks, animal shelter, historic sites, and full money towards the rec center, that exceeds that $220 million cap. So the 125 recommends our support of the viability of the Justice Center, the consensus around that, and shows an example of how you might consider costing the other items to try to fit it within the framework of which you are dealt with.
Okay, that's helpful. I appreciate that clarification. It's, like you say, we have a formidable task before us, and, you know, but it's one I think we're up to, and I'm looking forward to further discussions. Thank you.
Anyone else have other further questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, GK, for leading that. Sometimes it's hard to get seven of us on a consensus track here, let alone 21 people. So big thank you for doing that, putting the work in, being there at most of those meetings, then following back up with YouTube. A lot of good passion, a lot of good conversations, a lot of good input that was here to really give us a good guiding post of where we need to go. As I was telling Mr. Crandall, I mean, having this discussion is monumentally huge to have the political will to even discuss this item. So moving forward in a path that can make some generational changes that will just outlast all of us is pretty exciting to do, and thank you for being a part of that and giving us some direction to digest and what we need to do. So I guess, Mr. City Manager, what, same question as Mr. Crandall, what's our next steps here with moving this and getting this formalized in front of us?
Well, Councilmember Perkins, I'm a big fan of the program Survivor, and at the end of the season on Survivor, the host always says it is transitioning from the players to the jury, and I think that's where we're at. Your citizens have looked at this issue, your staff's looked at this issue. We've kicked this around for well over two years now. I think it is time for the jury, AKA you and the council, to decide what you're comfortable taking forward to the community in terms of projects, and what amount you're comfortable asking the community to support. So we are certainly excited to support you in those deliberations, but we're really at a place now where the council is going to have to make those determinations of what goes on a ballot.
Would it be prudent for us to get this moving on the December 2 council agenda?
You know...
Or how fast would we move with, as I'm talking with my colleagues here?
Yeah. What's your vision of that, if I could ask, you know, to...
Well, I would, sure. So I would say at minimum, we should have, have an item on for consideration. So obviously, whatever discussion we need to have tonight, and moving forward to lock down what our, what our ass is going to be, I would shoot for that. The earlier the better, so we can get in front of our citizens what our bold, ambitious plan is, and we can start the messaging and the conversations with our citizens and community groups and stakeholders.
Anyone else have other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Doug, I just want to say thank you and for all the members for serving. I did have one question, and I apologize if I missed it, or maybe I didn't read between the lines, but was there any conversation on, or any recommendation on how the council should do the questions? I mean, is one question, five questions? Was there any discussion on that?
There is, there was, but we stayed away from that. We actually had some recommendation through city staff that it would be best for us to stay focused on what are the needs of the community, what are the deferred maintenance needs that are priorities? And quite frankly, we didn't really want to, I hate to put it as politics, but the questions that would go before voters, we didn't want to think about these projects as simply what would garner, in the case that it went to the voters in April, we didn't want to think about, what's a project that could yield 57% plus one and get, you know, approved? We didn't want that necessarily to cloud our judgment. It's hard to ignore that that is clearly in the environment, because, you know, whatever you will ask of citizens will require a super majority of voters to approve. So like I said, it's hard for that not to creep into your psyche as you are thinking about these. But we are not making any recommendations on how this is posed to the voters. We are simply recommending, and quite frankly, because of the three questions that were put to us at the beginning, the total bond package, the categories within that bond package, and the dollar amounts it could be within those potential categories. We were not asked to evaluate potential questions, so we tried to not touch it with a 10-foot pole.
Okay, I can appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Very good. No other further questions? I just want to, again, say thank you to the committee, great work, and you may just stay around, because I've got a couple of questions, and I want to see, so I know citizens have asked me, with the legislature passing, the opportunity to freeze your assessed valuation. This may be a Mr. Coover question. Is there a way to help citizens between now and December 31st to, you know, that are over 62, to freeze that? Is that, how does that work, or do you need just some time to research that? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, and we can certainly address that later, but I just think that's a, you know, a thing for people, for those senior citizens. If we can help them freeze their assessed valuations, that would help.
To answer the question, I don't know if there's anything that the city is in a position to do, but I'm certainly happy to confirm that and get back to you, one way or the other.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you. It's worthy to note that that committee, that question was brought up by the committee, thinking about that, also thinking about some areas of town where there is tax abatement, how would those folks be affected? Chapter 353 redevelopment areas and other properties. The only recommendation we would make is that the city work to be very clear in helping voters understand the implications for people who may be in those... in helping voters understand the, the implications for people who may be in those particular cases and including seniors that have had, through the, the state statute that allows counties, and Jackson County has allowed the, the property tax freeze through an application process. So, but further clarification on all of those things would be great.
That's very helpful. And, and I just want to say thank you to the committee. I thought it was very wise of you when you made the recommendation to, hey, this is not gonna, this is not gonna hit your first year tax bill when it's approved. It's gonna be a scenario where it's gonna be a phased-in approach over time so that, number one, you can't do all the projects anyway because there's not that much capacity in the construction world to do everything all at once. So we obviously would pick priorities, work with those priorities, and then phase it in over time. So it's not gonna be this huge tax bill immediately. And, and Mr. City Manager, if I'm correct, and if I'm mat, you may need, you're better at numbers than I am. The number for a person who had a $250,000 home, I think, I think you did the math on that. If they did a $250,000 home or $300,000 home?
So we, we looked at it as per $100, $100,000. So, you know, for the, the average home, that's not, not the average, but for each $100,000 increment in there. And I will, I would have to pull that up, Mayor, to tell you.
You don't have to right now, but I know that's out there and that's a question we need to answer for citizens too, so.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, and I, I apologize. I, I want to make sure I don't throw a bad number out there. But I will, I will get that confirmed. Well, actually, if we can just hold just a second, I will tell you.
Thank you.
I've got this pulled up here. Okay, so for every $100 at a, if you were going to do a $250 million bond, okay, so for each, you know, incremental amount this would change, but that would be $1.05 of property tax per $100 of assessed valuation, per $100, okay? For a home, for each $100,000 increment at 55, at $250 million, that'd be about an extra $200 a year on your tax bill. So if your home is $200,000, you know, 400 bucks. If your home's 300,000, so, you know, multiply that by your home value. But for each $100,000 that your home is valued at, it would be about $200 of annual cost at the full freight, when this thing is fully bonded. And as you just pointed out and echoed off of Mr. Cowan's comments, that is not going to happen day one, year one, et cetera. It will take, there's no feasible way for the city to complete all those projects in one year. So we will only issue the bonds on a as-you-go basis. But once fully implemented, it would be about $200 per year at, at a $250 million bond.
And, and just like you said, the first year might be 50 bucks.
Right, right.
You know, it might be year four, it might be 100 bucks.
Right.
You know, because it's gonna be, when can we get the projects done? Where's the priority list? How's it put into place? Then how do we, as a council, vote on the levy? Because that's really gonna be the trigger that makes it happen.
And contractor availability, you know, we, many of these projects will have to be completed by a contractor. So, you know, what's their project schedule look like? You know, when can they come in and overlay roads or reconstruct bridges, construct sidewalks? All, all of the projects, it will, it will take time to build this out.
Yeah, it just doesn't happen all at once.
Absolutely. Well said.
And so I think that's, that's, that's important. I know that, that the committee talked about that a lot and I just hope that's important because that's a question I've gotten from citizens. How will this work? What's the timeframe? What's the cost then? And, and, you know, what are the projects? And that's where we, as a council, have to decide what ultimately the projects that we're gonna work on and whether there'll be new priorities. Anyone else have other questions or comments? All right, very good. I cannot say thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. City Manager, Mr. Covert, it was not my intent to put you on the spot, so I hope we're still friends.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, that brings us to Independence Tourism Recommendations.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
And you want to introduce the next speaker?
And I, I will. I'm Zach Walker and I'm the city manager here in Independence. And as you've heard tonight, it is an exciting time to be in Independence. All the topics we're talking about. And we think here in, in Independence, one of the best ways to continue to amplify the great things happening in our community is through the city's tourism function. As the council will recall, we had a consultant earlier this year look at how best to structure tourism to deliver those services and help maximize return on investment here in the community. The council adopted a resolution that instructed me to further flesh out some of those options and then make a recommendation to you. And so that's what I'm doing here this evening. So just to kind of reset how, how we got here, all tourism services, I would say across the world, but certainly here in the United States, suffered greatly in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic. Made it very difficult to travel, all the restrictions that were put on place, all the health protocols. So tourism as an industry took a broadside hit as a result of the COVID pandemic. And as everybody's starting to amp back up and find their feet again in the wake of that, the competition for people's dollar to come and spend money in your community, to stay in your hotels, eat in your restaurants, visit your tourism assets, that's only intensified. Everybody is hungry to get those dollars into your community. Independence is at a bit of a disadvantage because of the way we are currently structured. And I'm going to go into more detail in a moment. But compared to the cities we compete for tourism dollars, we, we are organized in such a way that it puts us at a disadvantage. So we believe, and the council, you supported us in letting us further explore this, that it's time to explore other operating models so we can figure out ways to increase revenue that's coming into our community, increase our competitive position, put us in a better spot to bring people into Independence. So actually, this conversation, I've been throwing out a lot of historical references to you tonight. This conversation really finds its roots back in May of 2021, when our Parks, Recreation and Tourism Director, Eric Urfer, many will remember him. The very last email I got from Eric Urfer was one that said, "I think tourism," since I've been supervising it for the last several years, "should really stand alone on its own two feet. It should be an entity with arms-length distance outside of the city's purview." I mean, you still supervise it. Those are public dollars. You, you will always have that fiduciary responsibility. From an operation standpoint, let's set that upside, outside of the city. In November last year, we did hire that consultant, Karen Hibbard, from Manhattan, Kansas, a retired tourism director for Manhattan, Kansas, and asked her to look at what is the optimal way to deliver those services for Independence. This past July, Karen came in and presented to you. She shared three different options. And Karen's recommendation was a standalone model that was really, again, focused on supporting and promoting tourism activities. And then, as I mentioned, this past August, you gave me that direction to further flesh out what would a standalone model look like. So when we're talking about tourism, there really are three different industry models. What we have here today is tourism embedded in our Parks Department. Other places like Columbia, Missouri, Herman, Joplin, Lebanon, and St. Charles, they also have tourism as a division or a department of their, their city. And I'll talk about pros and cons of that here momentarily. Some entities have tourism embedded within a nonprofit. Typically, that is a Chamber of Commerce. Places like Branson, Perry County, down in the Boot Hill, St. Genevieve, for those of you that are familiar with that area, Washington, Missouri, known for its wine industry, they all have tourism embedded within their Chamber of Commerce. But you'll see, one of the most common models, as listed here on the screen, is tourism as a standalone model. And I would specifically call out here Maryland Heights, which is in the St. Louis metropolitan area, has a large outdoor amphitheater for concerts. St. Joseph, just up the road from us here. Springfield, Missouri. And then Visit KC, our regional tourism asset here. They all operate as a standalone model, a not-for-profit entity. And I specifically put those three in red and call those out because those represent our target market competition. When we're talking about trying to get people here, data tells us that these are the cities most likely to be competing for the same type of individual or family that Independence is trying to draw into our city. So what would each model mean for Independence? Well, obviously, if we keep it here at the city, that's just status quo, doing the same thing. Third-party model, again, most likely that's embedding that within the Chamber of Commerce. Standalone would mean creation of a nonprofit entity, which could have a name like the Independence Visitors Bureau. The city model, as I mentioned earlier, that puts us at a competitive disadvantage. What I mean by that is cities are intentionally designed, and I know we frustrate people with this sometimes, but we are designed to move slow so that there's no rash decision, no quick, impulsive move on anything. When you're talking about making these pitches and competitions for, for dollars, you really want to be nimble and you want to be able to move quickly. And just certain restrictions, spending guidelines, et cetera, that we have at the city, we're not allowed to do that. So that puts a shackle on us when we're competing for tourism. If, if it were to stay as a city department, we're going to have to continue to have that competitive disadvantage just be something we navigate around. But I would also say you're going to continue to see a reduction in the number of resources that are available to actually go into marketing services. And what I mean by that, just overhead costs, costs of personnel, salary benefits, all of that, you're gonna continue to see an escalation in that. That's just reality here, here at the city. A nonprofit model like the Chamber, that would remove some of those competitive disadvantages. But it could also potentially raise concerns about conflict of interest, you know? Not that I would ever see this happening, but there could be questions of, well, is the Chamber commingling those funds? Are they using it for a non-tourism-related activity? Like a, you know, a ribbon cutting or a golf tournament or something like that? I have no doubt about the professionalism of our Chamber, but that would probably be something that we would have to be on the defensive about consistently. I will also say, we've had a lot of robust conversations with the Chamber of Commerce about this. They even formed their own task force of Chamber members to explore this. At this point in time, the Chamber just does not feel that they are well-positioned to take this on permanently. They have discussed with us the possibility of using their term incubating that for a year to help get it up and running. But it would be disingenuous of me to really talk about this in any serious sense because the Chamber is just, is just not at a place right now where they are ready or willing to take this service on. So that really brings us to the model of a standalone visitors bureau. Again, being outside of the city's auspices, you're gonna remove many of those competitive disadvantages. We, we have mechanisms that we can avoid any of those potential conflicts of interest. And as you'll see momentarily, may even have the possibility to leverage additional resources to increase their funding potential by being outside of the city. In a standalone model, we would file all the necessary paperwork with the state to achieve 501(c)(6) status as a nonprofit entity. We would then contract for services, like we do for economic development services, with the visitors bureau to be our destination marketing organization. As you'll see momentarily, I'm gonna recommend that there be a board of directors that's appointed by the council to govern that entity. Obviously, the most significant portion of their funding would come from the city's transient guest tax, but there would be possibilities for this entity to apply for grants. There may be opportunities to form partnerships with entities like the Truman Library, the National Park Service, hotel motel lodging organizations, who may want to pool resources with us to help amplify the capacity of an entity like this. The benefits in addition to those funding items and as well as the, you know, leveling that competitive playing field, you're gonna get better marketing out of this. They're going to be able to focus. You're gonna have people whose primary training and education and background are in this. I am very proud of what our Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department have done to date with this. But Director Morris Heidi would be the first to tell you, this is not that entity's primary focus and mission and purpose. This would really bring in subject matter experts to continue to help us build on the great work that Parks and Recreation has done to date. Better marketing, that's gonna mean more people coming into your community, staying in your hotel, which is only going to then bring more transient guest tax and other sales tax revenue to our community. So again, as a nonprofit entity, we would go through all the necessary procedures to set up a nonprofit entity, articles of incorporation, bylaws. I would then recommend developing a contract for services that would spell out specifically what we expect the visitors bureau to do. I would put very specific performance metrics in there. Number of visitors we want to see each year, year-over-year increase in our lodging establishment stays. Those are just a few examples of the kind of metrics and data-driven outcomes we could put into a contract to make sure this entity is performing at a level and in a way that the council would expect. This is to be illustrative only, so don't, you know, fall in love or disparage us too much at this point. But I do recommend a board of directors. And similar to what we have structured for the Independence Event Center, CID, to date, you know, the event center is a city-owned asset, but we have set up a separate management corporation that has a board of directors. I would recommend something similar like that. An example of that could be having our assistant city manager that's over economic development, the Parks and Recreation Director, our Finance Director, and then some industry-specific type perspectives represented. I would continue to have a representative from the Chamber of Commerce, so the business community is party to this. Somebody from the hotel and lodging industry, somebody from the attractions industry, and then tourism-related business representative. What I mean by that, it could be somebody from the Square Association, from the Inglewood Business District. It could be somebody from the Truman Library, the National Park Service. But these, these assets and industries whose primary purpose is to draw people into Independence, having them party to this board of directors as well. Again, just concepts for you all to start thinking about. But in speaking with Ms. Hibbard, our tourism consultant, it's very typical for these boards to have three-year terms, two-year term limits, so a total of six years serving on there, having, so that there is some continuity, fourth of the board changing over each year. And then monthly meetings of that board with semi-annual reports. A representative from that board standing before the council, providing you reports on their activities, their results, et cetera. The board itself would be responsible for strategic goal-setting, for approving the specific budget for the visitors bureau, ongoing annual fiscal oversight, hiring and supervising the bureau director, and then, of course, the accountability to the city council. This chart shows just an example of what a department bureau, I should say, what a bureau might look like. In this model, there would be five employees. The bureau director, his or her assistant, a multimedia coordinator. So this is the person that's doing social media, that's doing videos, all of the day-to-day engagement. A sales manager, so somebody who is out trying to book conferences, conventions, tour groups. Having a sales assistant to that person, so that would be your five. We recommend then a contract for services for a marketing or public relations contractor had the opportunity to explore and start to investigate this. And there are a lot of high-caliber, high-powered firms out there that could help us with this. So we, we think there is a, a possibility that we could staff this with just five individuals and then, of course, professional assistance through a contract on, on marketing. The tourism or transient guest tax, I should say, typically brings in about $2.3 million per year. In this model, I would recommend a 50-50 split, 50% of that going to the Visitors Bureau and 50% staying with the city to operate the Trails Museum and the historic sites. The 60-40, you'll see in just a minute, but that is referenced to 40% going to administration, overhead expenses, 60% actually going into their marketing and promotions budget. So, the industry standard, according to one of the industry-recognized groups, Destination International, and I should say this is as of May 2021, was the most recent information I could glean. But in that 60-40 split, again, 60% being for marketing and development, 40% for salaries, benefits, and other administrative overhead. The dollar amounts on the left reflect kind of that industry standard as of 2021. You can see that our dollar amounts would be a little bit less than that, but again, industry standards could be places, you know, as big as Los Angeles, or, I mean, these are kind of some averages for the United States. So, just to bring this home for you, what would a transition look like from where we're at today to this model? Again, I would recommend, as long as the city continues to own our historic site assets, our museum, et cetera, that maintenance and operation budget for that stay with the city. And in speaking with Director Heidi, about 50% of that fund is sort of the bare minimum amount that he needs to be able to care for those sites and operate them. So that would then leave the other 50% going for the Visitors Bureau. Under that model, we would set up the nonprofit entity. The council would approve a contract for services with them, and then that board that is formed would start to fill out that staffing on a permanent basis. So, Mr. Mayor, our, our recommendation is to move towards this standalone, not-for-profit model, but wanted to get council's feedback and thoughts on that before we take this any further.
Thank you very much. Anyone, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I know that we have talked about this for a long time. And I appreciate that places that do it well have done it with dedicated staff who wake up every single day trying to figure out how to get their name in the AAA magazine and how to bring, you know, folks with their RVs into town to, to use their amenities. And I think when you ask people what makes Independence unique, it's our history, and people are extremely proud of that. We just haven't capitalized on it, I think, as well as we possibly could. This seems to me to be a mechanism to get us back to that. We, we used to have dedicated staff.
We did.
Who dreamed and thought and promoted the city, and we've certainly seen their loss. I appreciate that Director Heidi has done the best he can with having multiple hats, but anybody who's done that knows what a very difficult job that is. So I appreciate you bringing options forward for us, thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing before, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's important for us to remember that that tourism tax is a dedicated tax. So that tax can't be used for anything else. It can't be used for a bus, it can't be used for other things. It is a dedicated tax that has to be used for tourism-related activities, correct?
It was approved by the voters at a rate of six and a half percent on lodging establishments and can only be used for the marketing, promotion, et cetera, of the city for the sole purpose of amplifying tourism activity in the community. No other services, operations, et cetera. Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, well, Mr. City Manager, thank you very much. I know you worked a long time, oh, excuse me, please forgive.
Forgive me.
I was writing some thoughts down, so.
No worries.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. We have been, been talking about this for a while, as Councilman McCannellus had mentioned, different evolutions of how this can look. Can you explain why, a little bit of the disadvantages that we are facing now?
So, some of those other entities that I mentioned, like Springfield, for example, where it is set up as a nonprofit entity, as Councilmember McCannellus said, you have somebody waking up every day that's thinking about it, but, but it's more than that. As you've all probably seen, you know, on the news where they say, you know, "Sign up to go on this seven-day train ride through the Rocky Mountains," or something like that. There are groups out there that book group tours, all right? Whether that is through a senior living facility, whether that's through some sort of club, whether it's just through, hey, we're going to do a Target Blast and try to sell as many packages as we can to a certain group here. When I say we're at a competitive disadvantage, our procurement policies prohibit us from moving as quickly and using some promotional tactics that other communities who don't have as rigid municipal procurement policies that they're able to do. And like it, love it, whatever, it's just the truth of the matter that whoever makes you feel the best, whoever really leaves you with a good taste in your mouth, is probably the place that you're going to say, you know what, I'm going to sign up my group tour to go to Springfield or to wherever. And, you know, if we put on kind of a milquetoast presentation and a milquetoast pitch to these groups, you're probably going to get milquetoast results. So, we would love to see more of those tour buses. I mean, if you think about it, Truman Library's made this $33 million investment. The federal government is about to make a multimillion-dollar investment in a new visitor center. We have all these exciting plans that we've rolled out tonight. We want people to come from the outside, to come and see this stuff, stay in the hotels, eat in the restaurants, pay sales taxes so that we have resources to provide services to our community here. So in order for us to be able to do that in a way that other cities are competing for that talent, we, we need to get ourselves out from under the city umbrella so we can put on a, a better pitch and a better show to the folks who are booking these tours.
Well, I'm, I'm for the change. I think as we're looking this holistically, I mean, with the big dynamic futuristic look that we're, we're doing, this is just another natural next step of trying to bring that tourism in with our hotels. So as the city is investing in ourselves and upping our game, the standards for hotel years need to begin to up their game as well. And we have some very fine facilities here, and some that are, are not, not so. And I know, working with some of my colleagues here to try to work on that end of stuff, that's going to be a, a key component here, because as we're moving forward to try to up our game, then we expect them to have quality places for the visitors and, and the tourists to come in and our residents when their family comes in, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
So this is a, a complete look at, at how we need to do this.
And, and you know, if I could, if I could amplify what you're saying, I know Councilmember Vaught serves as the liaison to the council's FIFA World Cup Committee. Every city in the metro, and then some, is going to be putting their best foot forward to try to get people to come into their community on the non-game days over those six weeks that that tournament is playing out here in Kansas City. In order for us to shine and stand out above the noise, it's really my strong recommendation that we give ourselves the best platform and organize ourself in such a way that we can cut through that noise and make sure Independence is front of mind among all the other opportunities that a visitor to the region's going to have.
Do we need to amend our operating budget if we, if we move on, move on this?
What, what I would recommend, it's going to take a little bit of time to get articles of incorporation. I mean, it's not a particularly hard process, but it is one, you know, that involves filing of paperwork with the state, et cetera. So I really think we're in a good place time-wise where if, if the council is supportive of this moving forward, then we can have this reflected as part of the new fiscal year, beginning on July 1, and have a, a budget that reflects the bifurcation of resources for the continued operation and maintenance of historic sites, and then a budget that has the contract for services with the Visitors Bureau.
That would certainly be seamless for that method.
And so, so really, we've put ourselves in an advantageous position where we don't have to rush this. We're coming forward at a time that's right to build this and be reflected in the budget that would come to you in May.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, so you and I have had a number of discussions on this topic, and, and you know that I am of the opinion that we have an incredible history here in Independence that is unfortunately a secret to communities outside of Independence. Or maybe not a secret, but that, that would be, that'd be a little bit hard, a little bit sharp. But anyway, so, you know, I think, you know, this gives us an opportunity to move forward, to try to capitalize on some of the, the, the opportunity that is there that we haven't been able to do up to date. And so, you know, I'm certainly supportive of it and would, you know, say, let's move, move ahead post haste.
We, we have had many conversations, and it is exciting to now be able to share how I think we get to the place, the vision that you've shared, Councilmember Fears.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. City Manager, thank you very much. And Madam City Clerk, anything else from you before we wrap up? And Mr. City Manager, I don't mean to, anything else from you to, before we wrap up this meeting?
Mr. Mayor, as I said at the beginning, I think and hope that our future generations are going to look back on this meeting tonight as one of those historic milestones of how did we get to where we're at in a positive way? And it was exciting to be a part of it, and I appreciate the council's indulgence tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this meeting is adjourned.